This conference will now be recorded.
If anyone has any questions, changes, issues to the approved or the agenda as presented?
I'll make a move.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie Bass. I will second that to approve the agenda as presented. As with all our voting, we'll do it by roll call. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye. So the agenda is approved as presented. First thing on the agenda, Ken, I think you're going to take this regarding the Holy Trinity conditional use permit.
So we got the PowerPoint on the slide here. It's kind of showing up funny. Hold on a second here. Bear with me one minute while I get to where I want it to go. Well, we'll just go like this. I can't get it where I want it. All right. So first item on the agenda is Holy Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church applying for a conditional use permit amendment. This is actually an amendment of a conditional use permit back in 2004. So on the overhead here, and I'll see if I can zoom in a little bit for you. You can see the red outline is the Holy Trinity Church property. Couple of things to call out here as we go through the summary report is First Street Southeast was constructed in a couple of different phases to reach their west property line. And then you can also see on the very east end, east of the property, Mark Deutsch had built his section of First Street Southeast. So we have kind of a gap on the Becky's property, not a gap on the actual church property, but this was right away that was dedicated back in 2004 with a development agreement and plating and the conditional use permit that was done originally. And that is what we're amending here tonight. So what they're looking to do now is a 3,100 square foot office addition. Give you a little background, when the conditional use permit was initially issued for the site back in 2004, that was for about a 6,560 square foot addition. As it was in 2004 and as it is today, religious institutions are still a conditional use in the B2 community commercial zoning district. This particular addition that we're looking at here today is on the south side of the building would have eight offices, a reception area, bathrooms, and a conference room. So not a big addition, but will accommodate kind of the future layout of their church, anticipating at some point in the future, their access will be all coming from First Street Southeast. So that's kind of the idea to move the offices down to that side of the building. As I mentioned about a minute ago, a 2004 development agreement with the church did actually address the future construction of First Street Southeast and the closing off of Trunk Highway 19, Main Street access when they have alternate access available. So a little more background on that. With this conditional use permit report, while the addition itself is not particularly troublesome or even controversial at all in staff's opinion, we did have a review by our city engineer and MINDOT, and by our city engineer, I mean Chris Cabot and Mike Codola, who's been a traffic engineer that's reviewed a number of traffic studies, including for Praha Village in this area. So had a very good background on the traffic function of the area. They all agreed that Trunk Highway 19 access closure should be delayed until First Street Southeast can connect at both 10th Avenue, which it does now, and Shulinsky Avenue, which we still have the gap at the Becky's property at this point. So what staff is proposing, what the planning commissioner recommended, is having a triggering point for Holy Trinity to construct their segment of First Street Southeast when the east segment of First Street through the Becky's property gets to their property line. And at that point, or MINDOT could require the removal of their access to Main Street prior to that time. Now, MINDOT has not indicated any desire to do that, but they always have that ability to close the access should they choose to do that. So those are the two triggering points. And that one was brought up by MINDOT to make sure that they said, hey, it's still our highway. We can require the closure before your other triggering factor here with First Street being brought to their east property line. We did have a public hearing at the planning commission meeting last week on May 27. We did have two public comments received from Ben Hilding, co-pastor at Holy Trinity, and Carla Klinkfuss, the council president. They both noted at the public hearing that they were in agreement with the conditions of the conditional use permit, including the amendment that staff is proposing as one of the conditions, condition number five, for the conditional use permit to be amended. The planning commission recommended ultimately three to zero to approve the conditional use permit amendment with the eight findings and five conditions contained in the staff report. We're going to go over a couple of exhibits here before we open up for questions and comments, but the addition to the church, you can kind of see on the map here, I'll zoom in a little bit for everybody, is just a 50 by 62 office addition on the very south end of self portion of the building here. You can kind of see how First Street Southeast has been brought to the property line. I do want to note there were some easements that the church did grant for this curve of First Street to get through in a more linear pattern on the property, but the building is maintaining the minimum 15-foot setback to the property line and that roadway right of way. And then we know obviously the First Street Southeast extension through the existing right of way here, and then the future extension through the Becky's property to the east. Schematic drawing here for everybody to kind of see the layout a little bit. We'll skip ahead to a better detail here in one second after we look at a building elevation. We do have this.
Excuse me, the PowerPoint is not working. So I don't know if it's just me or...
You're not seeing anything?
No, it's not. It's not working.
Yeah, I just, we just see the opening slide and then off to the side, a small window that has the layout of the property.
Well?
Now it moved.
There we go.
That was going, all right, thank you.
Can you go back to, can you go back to the site plan before you go into the building?
It's where I have the site plan here for everybody. Here's the site plan. I'll zoom back in for everybody. The addition is just in the south edge of the building. You can see on the site plan, so really not taking up any of the parking lot. It's using an area that previously was actually part of their playground and outside play area. So that's kind of how it is in relation to First Street. So we have only a 15-foot setback from the right of way along First Street there. This is being maintained. They don't need any variances or anything for the addition. Here's a schematic drawing I showed for the addition, and I'll get a detailed view here in one second for you. Regarding building elevation, the B2 district does have design requirements and just like any commercial building, we have required that high quality materials be used, use different design features to break up building elevations, including windows and other type things. So what they've got proposed is a continuation of the brick on the east elevation of the building, addition of windows and a fabric awning over the entrance door. And then on the other elevations of the building, continuations of their burgundy-colored steel siding that would match seamlessly what they already have on the building there. So back in 2004, this met our requirements and would continue to do so today as they're matching the building as it exists today. Layout of the office itself here, so you can see this is, answering my point here is hopefully maybe you can't, but the entrance, you come into the vestibule, you have an office reception area off to the right as you come into that door, and then the office is kind of around the perimeter here, a conference room, and then a couple of bathrooms and a couple more offices in the back corner. The delineating point between the existing building and the addition is kind of the difference between the black color, darker colored outlines as the existing building. So you can see it seamlessly transitions in that corridor into the existing building, but again, not a large addition by any means, but this will shift our office to the south end of the site to better accommodate future growth that could occur on the site by opening up that north end of the property near the sanctuary area of the building. Some photos here for everybody. So their offices are currently up by the entrance in that bottom right-hand side photo there, and then you can see the axis going up to Trunk Highway 19. You can see the facades on this portion of the building, and then the east portion here on the photo on the right with Praha Village in the background. So they're going to continue that brick through the building addition on this east elevation. Couple of other photos here. So back in 2004, they were required to plant this smaller row of trees along the north edge of that First Street right of way. They've obviously grown quite nicely over the years to provide screening to the townhomes to the south. Then you have the large trees that are existing on the south edge of that right of way. There's kind of a nice canopy look through that future street extension. Then a couple of final photos here, just the end, south end of that building where the addition will be extended to the south and kind of see how it is in relation to that building. So one of the conditions the planning commission, staff recommended and the planning commission agreed was that a couple of shrubs on that elevation of the building, since the building is in close proximity at the minimum setback line there. So that kind of helped break up that elevation that we've got adjacent to the roadway. And a couple of final photos here, just to show what that side of that elevation, the building looks like currently. So that same color and siding will be matched as it extends to the south. So ultimately staff and then the planning commission did recommend approval of the conditional use permit amendment with the findings and conditions in the staff report regarding condition number five and the amendment to the development agreement to kind of better clarify the recommendation from the city attorney or city engineer, MINDOT and staff, as we would plan to work with the city attorney to get that development agreement amendment finished up and ready for the June 15 agenda. And that should be very doable to get that done, should the council be agreeable to that condition in the report here tonight. And I do want to point out that Mr. Hilding and Ms. Klinkfuss are on the call here tonight should you have any questions from Holy Trinity.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ken or Ben or Carla in regarding to this conditional use permit? Well, that's good. If not, I guess I will make a motion to approve the conditional use permit number C1-2004.
I'll second, Maggie.
Okay, I guess I should, got a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments. I guess this actually was a resolution amending the conditional use permit number C24, so or 2004. So Maggie, if you still want to be the second on that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So if there's no other comments or questions at this time, if not, we'll do a roll call. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye, so the resolution has passed 5-0. All right, guys. Good luck. I'll be looking forward to seeing it when it's done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Good luck, Mark.
Yep.
Okay, the second thing on the amendment is, looks like our second reading of our garage sale ordinance that, we had the first reading last week, and it was published and everything, I assume, Ken?
Everything's been posted as it was required to be done, and so we're looking for the second reading and adoption, and then we would publish the ordinance should it be approved here tonight and next week's great times.
Does anyone have any questions in regarding to this, the second reading? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the second reading and adopt the attached ordinance.
Both.
Was that Sean?
Yeah.
Okay. I got a motion by Sean Ryan.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll do a roll call. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
And Chuck Nicolai says aye. So that passes 5-0. So good job on that, Ken.
Thank you.
Move on to the next thing. Next thing on the agenda, Jim has cleaned up the ordinance regarding the golf cart, and he's looking for approval of the first reading, correct, Jim?
Second reading. We did the first.
Oh, okay.
But I did leave the same memo on there, but this would be the second reading.
Okay.
Same as the previous ordinance, we would look for the council's entertainment to do a second reading and get that published then.
Okay. My fault. So if anyone has any other questions, concerns, or issues regarding the second reading of the amendment to the Chapter 75 Motorized Golf Cart Ordinance? Okay, if no one has any comments, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of the golf cart ordinance.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll do a roll call. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
And Chuck Nicolai says aye. So that passes 5-0. Oh, we're cruising right along. Next, Ken, I think, are you taking the wetback? Our wetland setbacks?
Wetland setbacks, yep. Another PowerPoint here for you. We'll make it work today or this time.
Well, I think once we told you we got it to work, it's just that we're all sitting there going, okay, he's going to enlarge something, but I don't see anything.
I got three different screens going, and it wasn't on any of them, so I apologize.
You got to quit playing those games while we're having a meeting.
All right. We'll go with the amendments here on the PowerPoint. So this is an item, actually the planning commission had actually started looking back at following planning commission, city council, having a few different variance requests, specifically three in the past 2020, a few months of 2020, and then a total of six back to 2002. So city council asked staff to look into the amendments that would allow homes and structures to be located up to, but not encroaching into any existing wetland buffer or easement area that were previously established to protect that wetland. We'll talk about more of how the ordinance currently reads and what's required, but what we are proposing in summary with the ordinance that's in the packet tonight is to allow structures to be constructed up to the edge of established buffers and easements. Now, I note this specifically because there's a number of buffers and easements from year 2002 up to about the year 2010, where we had a blanket 40-foot buffer that was required in the ordinance. And on top of that is where we had the 50-foot setback that we had talked about with these past variances, say to be initial 10 feet from that existing buffer edge. So to go along with that, we also had from 2010 to current, even newer version of that ordinance that allowed, or that said that buffers and easements were anywhere between 25 to 65 feet around any wetland. And that was based on an assessment rating of that wetland that was conducted and reviewed ultimately by the city requiring that. But that 50-foot setback from the edge of the buffer still, or from the wetland still applied, whether we had this 25 to 65-foot buffer or the 40-foot. So what we're trying to do is say, as long as that buffer and easement is being maintained that protects the wetland, you can build whatever that protection is that's being offered to that wetland, not just using that blanket 50-foot setback. The one caveat to that is we are recommending keeping the 50-foot setback. I've kind of highlighted that one on the screen here. So we do have situations where we have unplanted property in town that is eligible for building permits, and we very likely in those situations would not have a wetland assessment completed or have any buffer in place. So in those cases, we do propose keeping a 50-foot setback from a wetland edge, just because we would have no other information available to help us determine what that protection from that wetland should be. So that's kind of a catch-all part of the ordinance amendment that we will keep in there for areas where we didn't have an assessment done or didn't have an easement already in place to protect that wetland. So the planning commission did hold a concept review at their April 22, 2020 meeting, and then we had the public hearing at our May 27, 2020 meeting last week. We did not have any public comments received from that public hearing. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended three to zero to approve or recommend that the council approve the amendment. So all we have for you tonight is the first reading of the ordinance amendment. Now, I did want to give a little reminder of one of the past variance examples that we had of the situation where this was actually the Y-Net property up on the corner of 7th and Lexington. So we had a conservation easement which was established by the red line, but our ordinance said basically between that red line and this green line, you had to meet that 50-foot setback from the wetland edge. And as we talked with that variance and other variances, that it just didn't make sense to have additional setback when the protection level was already maintained by that easement edge. So this would allow, in this case, it wouldn't have been a variance, they could have just built to the edge of that conservation easement. So hopefully that provides a good overview and background on how we got to this point with this amendment. But again, we are looking for an introduction of the ordinance amendment tonight.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Ken, you know, that last picture you showed of that property that we had did where they were building the deck right over the, close to it, are they going to be able to, when we pass this, are they going to be able to extend it out now to meet that? Because I know that they were holding it back to fit the curtain ordinance instead of asking.
Which one are you talking about, Rick?
I think... Right in front of us right now.
No, I think that was the other one in the WIT development where didn't we, they were going to put a...
Oh, the one on the WIT development, they're going to put a patio out, and they had a little bit of an area, still the wetland edge, their buffer edge, if they could actually put a patio, and it wasn't very large, but they did that going in with, and they will utilize that space for patio, not a deck for patio. But still outside the buffer.
Now will they be able to extend what they just got done, building, or?
No, because that was, the variance allowed them to build up to the edge of the buffer that already existed. So this amendment wouldn't change that for them, they just wouldn't have had to have gone through a variance in order to build that. This would have saved them a couple of months in the review.
Right.
Here, this is Mike. Ken, for the benefit of the council, could you briefly talk about who conducts or those wetland analysis in regards to the proposed setbacks?
Yeah, so what we have, and we have a new plat coming into town, or actually any determination on wetland edges, we have requirement that the applicant provide a wetland doing a season that are then reviewed by our wetland specialists with S.H., and then further reviewed by the technical evaluation panel, they call it the TEP. And that group of professionals provides their opinion and feedback to the city, and then ultimately, when plaits are filed, and in the case of when plaits are filed now, that's when the council approves the final plat, when you determine where that conservation easement would be placed. So it goes through a few different layers of review and determination and where that protection layer should be. So it all falls back ultimately to our ordinance language on the quality of the wet.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone have any questions at this time?
Ken, this is Bruce. I have a housekeeping question. When our ordinances refer to Minnesota state statute, do we update them? Are we citing the most current revision to the statutes?
If there's anything current, we will refer to the more current version. In Scottsview, this one, there wasn't anything to update at this point, but yeah, there certainly could be at any given point.
I'm just wondering in the future if it should reference any revisions to the statute in the future, so our ordinances stay current?
And talking to Scott Riggs about that, he's actually said most recently that even if you refer to it, it's better to actually just amend that at a later date to include the current numbering or whatever scheme there might be, because the whole statute could get changed completely. So he said, we're handling it the way we shouldn't. If there's an actual change in the number or whatever it might be, we'll just amend the ordinance again at that point. It would be easier to do what you're referring to, as you say, or as revised, but there's been some challenges to that recently, particularly in the case of zoning type matters.
Okay, so there may be somebody that slips in and would have to comply with an older version of a statute than the risk of taking that.
You could potentially run into that, yep. But we're always monitoring that to make sure that we're keeping that current.
Oh, you have a way to track that?
Yeah, we get an update every year from the league, and we go through those every year to make sure that we're keeping current as best we can, anyway. Some things just, you know, might slide under the radar a little bit, but as soon as we figure them out, we will bring them forward to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve the first reading of the amendment to the ordinance on the setbacks, wetland setbacks.
So moved.
Motion by Sean Ryan?
Aye.
Second by Rick Seiler. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye, so the first reading passes 5-0. Again, Ken, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, ziplining.
All right, got a fun one here from the park board. So at the park board meeting on May 12, the park board voted unanimously to forward a recommendation to the council for a installation on a zip line. This includes two different components. We have a portion for the actual zip line and installation itself, and then a concrete surround, we like to do the ADA accessible surround, so you can kind of walk around the playground areas, keep the wood chips in and contained. And so those are the two components we have here tonight. So on the overhead, or this is a slide, I should say, we have the location of the zip line. It's basically a 25-foot wide by 125-foot long area, but obviously worked with Chris Cabot on this location. He actually provided some elevation data and location data based on that storm line that's moving or being moved in this portion of the park. And he'd kind of been putting off this project till we knew how the Main Street project was going to play out specifically related to the storm line. And then the other factor was also the location of the Veterans Memorial. So we've got in the location here, it needed to be on a flat portion of the park. All the grade in using the zip line comes from different elevations of the starting point of the zip line and the ending point of the zip line. And I'll go to the next slide to show you how that kind of works. So on the photo on the top, the top is actually the recommended design, not particularly the colors, well, the same colors that'll match the equipment in the park, which is a forest green and brown. But the far end of the photo on the top here is the platform. The kids walk up to that. It's accessible if you're in a wheelchair, it actually is well, and then they can get up to the zip line and then ride it down and... And you're only a couple of feet off the ground, but they are fun. One very similar to this, I've actually been to with my own kids over in Lonsdale and a few other different parks, and should be a very popular feature in the playground area there. So initially, this was a 2019 budget item, delayed to 2020 here. So we had a budget from the park equipment fund, so this is not general fund dollars, but the park equipment fund, $30,000 for this. So we had a low quote on the zip line, the top photo there, the mantis zip line of $18,606. That was a low quote on that one. And then for the concrete surround, we had chronic concrete masonry for $9,800, a low quote of that. And then along with some bulk wood chips that we'd already purchased for $1,550, we came in, not quite $50 under the budget in total, but it is under the budget amount of $30,000. So again, the park board recommended approval of the purchase of the concrete surround and then the Northland Recreation mantis zip line to be paid for out of the park equipment fund. And we'll have the project get underway sometime after the 4th of July.
Ken, what does this project leave the park fund with monetary wise after this?
Oh, that's a good question, Sean. Let me pull that up here real quick. After this project, excuse me, and after, we also have another project that will be coming forward within the next month or two, is a picnic shelter at the park. But apparently we'd have about $90,000 in there left over after this project. And then the picnic shelter is another 60 out of there. So we'd have about $30,000 remaining with no more income if those two projects for 2020 are completed. And we generally get, you know, between 20 and 30,000 a year into the fund. Kind of depends on new home construction, new business construction, things like that that come in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Ken, how long will it take to put it together? And is it a two or three-week project?
Um, you know, there's two components, kind of getting the playground stuff in and then the sidewalk surround by two different contractors. I know, I don't want to give the time exactly on it. It could be a three-week kind of project, maybe a month to get it all done. And there's obviously some grass seed that has to be put in and grown, I think, before we let kids run around in it. But yeah, maybe about a month, I would say.
Good, I think you'll be a welcome addition to the park. Any other questions? Look for a motion to approve the purchase of the zip line and...
So moved.
The concrete works, that was Sean Ryan, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Motion by Sean Ryan, and I will second it. So if there's no other comments or questions, we will take a vote. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye, so it passes 5-0. Mike, I think you're going to take the Legion?
I will. What you've got in front of you tonight is a request from the Legion Pavilion Company. They're also doing business as the park ballroom, asking for a temporary deferment of their July 1, 2020 special assessment payment that's part of the lease agreement that we have with them. The amount of the deferred payment is a little over $7,000, and they're basically asking for a 60 to 90-day deferral or up to or prior payment by October 1 of 2020. The primary reason for their request is they've had some challenges, as everybody has in revenue generation at the facility. And so they're looking for a temporary deferral. We're down to the last three payments under the lease agreement with the Legion, which is July 1 of this year, and then January and July of next year. After talking with the city attorney, he thought we could simply just, at this stage of the game, handle it with the council motion for the 90-day deferral. If we were going to get into something more extensive, then he might recommend amendments to the lease agreement. But since we need to formally work on addressing that lease agreement next year, we both thought it might be money better spent not doing that at this time and waiting until next year. The current amortization interest rate is about 5%. And you can see the estimated amount of the deferral or moving the payment from July 1 to October 1, assuming they took the full amount, is a relatively nominal amount. So we'd recommend that the council approve the lease repayment extension from July 1 to October 1 of this year.
Yeah. Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the lease repayment extension to October 1st.
This is Maggie else.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or comments, okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye, so it passes 5-0. Okay, let's get a COVID update. We haven't got one from the governor in a long time, so let's get one from our office here. Jim, do you want to enlighten us, or are you going to have Mike or?
Sure, I can. Not a lot has changed, other than with the bar restaurant outdoor stuff. Mike has been quite busy reviewing some of those outdoor plans. Here in City Hall, we continue to work our teams for the employees. Tomorrow, we are getting the glass installed at the windows, so that'll help just to have a barrier. Once we do open for customer service at the windows again, we'll have that barrier available to us. So that Glenn has been working on that, just a process to coordinate that and get that together. Department heads are meeting two times weekly, coming up with that reopening plan that we have to have in place. So we're continuing to meet and work on that. And that's to cover, to cover our cleaning process, and there's like six different bullet items that it has to cover. So we continue to move forward with that anyways. Other departments out in the city, they continue to work with their teams. And if they are in close proximity to one another, they are masked up at that time if they can't exercise social distancing. So some of that is the same. I spent almost an hour over at the golf course today with Kurt, just reviewing what his plan was for outside and inside. Today, we also got noticed that the golf course could start selling alcohol again out on the course for consumption. So I talked to him about that and that process. So we're kind of back to what we were previous then with the golf course. But he has, he has spent some time working on his plan for the outdoor and, and his policies for cleaning and things, and he has everything ready to go over there, or they're working towards it anyways. Other than that, if any department heads have something they want to share or?
I think you covered it.
Hey, Jim, I just have a question regarding the glass. Is it going to be something like a bank where someone will slide something under the glass?
Yeah.
Is that what?
Each of the windows has a, has a piece of trim molding on the bottom, and that glass will sit up there. I think it, it varied from three and a half to four and a half inches. So that, that part will be open on the bottom.
Okay.
Things through.
So it'd be the length of the, the window? It'd be the width of the window, that opening?
Four, I think, two of the windows. One of them is shortened up because there's a desk in part of that window. So that's going to have a little different configuration, but yeah, it'll be a wider opening.
And I know Mike, Mike.
Also, there's going to be some holes in the glass and a speaker unit mounts to that glass then, that you're able to speak through then.
I know Mike and I talked on the phone this morning that this can, you know, also kind of give us a little bit better security.
Yes, absolutely.
At those three windows, I know we had some issues a couple of years ago that we had some concerns, so it's, it's good that that's going to serve both purposes.
Yes, yep, I agree with that. Any other questions at all?
Just Jim, if you could give us an update on the UTV thing?
Uh, yeah, I will. I continue to try and put together a, a model policy. I will have that for you, probably the next council meeting for sure. I'm finishing that up, and then I'll get it to Scott for his review as it is. And then if we have to make any tweaks, we'll do that prior to the council meeting for now, and then you guys will be able to review it. My plan right now is to, you guys kind of talked about a direction of just having a standalone ordinance for the UTV. So I would look at using, using the model of our, of our golf cart ordinance and then morphing that into the UTV with definitions and things, but kind of using that as the model for it. I know, I just have a few questions with Scott regarding, there are some ordinances out there that talk about a licensed driver. State statute talks about that you cannot be more restrictive than the DNR. So I just want to clarify some of those points about, if there is a 14-year-old that has a, an ATV certificate, they can drive on some trails and cross roads and do certain things with that permit. But I think at the same time, we could say if you are using it for general use in the city of New Prague on roadways, then you must have a valid driver's license to do that. Because there's a difference if that same 14-year-old wants to jump on it and drive it out on a direct route, just like a recreational vehicle right now, we could say that's allowed under our other ordinance, because they're using it to go out and recreate. They're not driving around for general use at that time. So I just want to run that point by our city attorney and make sure we're covered with that.
Okay. And Sean, I did mention that on my radio show today, that the UTV was not on the agenda, but it is still on our radar. And so just to make sure that people, you know, realize that it wasn't something that we're just forgetting about, so. Jim, I just have one question on that UTV thing. Because right now, they can drive if they're going directly out of town.
Yep.
Now, that was some of the comments I got, that for people who don't want to use it in town, they don't feel like they need to get a permit to be able to drive it directly out of town to use it under state statute.
And that would be true at that time, as the ordinance stands right now. And I, on, on our ATV and snowmobile ordinance, I do, I want to put in there about the definitions for ATVs and class one and two, and add and amend that. But if, if they're saying that's what it is, then we would expect them to drive in the manner that is covered in that ordinance, which would be to the right side of the roadway when conditions allow, and no faster than 15 miles an hour. With the ordinance on UTV that we're developing right now, that conceivably would be they are driving in the lane of traffic, no faster than the posted speed limit for, for that area. That would be the idea. So I think those would be the two distinctions, that if, if somebody's driving on a roadway and going over to Coburn's, we would expect that person to have a permit on that UTV. If they're just driving on a direct route out, then there's a possibility that that person doesn't need one, but it would depend on what their use is with that vehicle.
Okay.
But it, yeah, I mean, you could make that argument that, hey, I'm not buying one because I'm not using it to go to the grocery store or general purpose. I am only driving it on a direct route out. But at that time, then, I wouldn't expect them to be driving to the gas station to gas up or, or any other behaviors with that, other than that direct route out and direct route in.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone have any other questions regarding COVID-19? I don't know when the governor is expecting to make another announcement. Jim, I have not, have you heard anything? Is it going to be a couple of weeks or?
I would, I would anticipate it, anticipate that it's going to be two to three weeks. The next phases on his, on his sheet that they put out from the governor's office is phase three, but no dates are attached to that. And I think they're going to assess what kind of numbers are happening with the testing and then make their determination when they want to do that next step then.
Okay.
I would anticipate two to three weeks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions for Jim regarding the COVID-19 in regard to the city operations and so forth? Okay, thank you, Jim, very much for the update. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Issues on anything in the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I got a motion by Sean Ryan. Improve the consent agenda.
Well, second, this is Maggie.
Second by Maggie Bass. If there are no other questions or comments, okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
John Ryan?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye. Consent agenda is five, passes 5-0. We're at that point miscellaneous. Does, we'll start with Ken, you got anything else?
No, I don't have anything more.
Okay. Mike, how about you?
I'm going to let Glenn give an update on the highway project, as far as kind of what's happening there. But I want to pull out one of the things that all of you should have received, the first update this past Friday, hopefully by email, on what's happened with the project.
You mean the letter from Julie?
The, the letter from Chris Cabot.
Yeah, Julie Brickman, I think it was.
Yeah, she sent it out.
Yep, okay.
In case you didn't happen to pick up on it, and I would certainly encourage you to do this, that one of the easier ways, since everybody typically is on their phone, is that they've added a new feature this year that you can get text updates. So if you go in and type the word New Prague, and you send that word to the following telephone number, if you'll write this down, this may give you a quick update. where you don't have to go back to your computer, and you'll be able to get updates on each of these weekly newsletters. The telephone number is 833-709-1208. And put in capital letters the word "New Prague", and you should get on the text update for the weekly project updates. That's just a new twist that he's added this year.
Okay.
And I'll let Glenn talk about the weekly meetings and the meeting with businesses and the update from our pre-con this week, so I won't steal his thunder in that.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's all I've got at this point.
All right, thank you. Barb, do you have anything?
I do not, thanks.
All right, thank you. Patrick, how about you?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. James, anything else? Put your microphone on, please. There you go.
Sorry, I didn't plan on talking, but just with the activity up in metro area, we continue to monitor the events that are happening up there. We're meeting semi-weekly with the chiefs here in Scott County, just to make sure that we have the resources that we need in the event that something should happen in our area. There are one department that I'm aware of that are, well, two, Scott County and Belle Plaine are sending some officers up for mutual aid to Minneapolis Police Department. At this time, I had a couple officers that were volunteering, but at this time, we have not sent anybody up for the mutual aid at all.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's about it.
Okay. Well, we've been waiting to hear from you, Glenn.
Not that much. Main Street's going to start on June 8, Monday, June 8. That's when the road's going to be closed. The road's going to be closed at 7th Avenue through traffic, and also at Highway 21 to through traffic. It's going to be a hard close, and we'll talk about that. We already talked today a little bit, and SM Hensys will be getting back to us. It will be a hard close. In other words, you will not be able to move at all except foot traffic between 2nd Avenue, Northwest/Southwest, or by Wells Fargo and Highway 21. It could be a hard close all the way up to 1st Avenue, Northwest/Southwest, but we're trying to convince them that we don't want that hard close to happen for that extra block quite yet. They got a lot of work to do from 2nd Avenue to Highway 21, and we're trying to convince them to leave the other part, the one block, and then the rest of Main Street, to be what we'd call a soft close. You can get through, if the semi's coming from the east or the west, you're going to be told to go to the detour. If you want to get to a downtown business, or to the bank, or something like that, you can get there off of a side street. You could even park on the road and do your business, and then go again out of town on the side street. So that's really kind of the difference between a hard close and a soft close. I don't have that word yet from SM Hensys, but that's our objective. If you're not going to be working that extra block right away, leave it as a soft close. Also spent a little bit of time talking to Wells Fargo, and that wasn't the reason why we've been talking to them, but I wanted to keep them informed. And I've been talking to a Mike who is the building manager. He's based out of Minneapolis. And his concern is they have no lobby at this point. They've been, we've talked to them for the last couple of years. So there is no surprise to them as far as the fact that their drive up and their ATM machine will be out of commission for a period of time. And obviously, the gentleman's been in the business long enough that he knows construction, so it was no surprise to him. But with their lobby being closed, he said that's a bigger concern to us, because we don't have a way for them to walk up or go inside. So again, that wasn't the reason why we were talking to SM Hensys about it, but it reinforces the fact that we want to try to convince SM Hensys to not close the one block between 2nd Avenue and 1st Avenue in a hard close and start ripping it apart right now. A month from now might be the time to do that. Just depends on how the rest of the project goes from 2nd Avenue to Highway 21. So that's what we're working on right now. Yeah, I would think that they'll be okay with that. You know, if worst-case scenario is they take the roadbed away and it's just gravel, that's fine. That's still a passable area. It still gets them into the drive-through, use the ATM, things like that. Again, starting June 8, Monday, June 8, they'll start with some removals. If they start on Monday, June 8, pulling road and curbing and stuff, that would probably surprise me, but that's what they're telling us. The other thing is, the week of June 8, they're going to start on the storm through Memorial Park. So I met with them last Friday out there, just to make sure we're all on the same boat. And you know, I think things are going to start. It's just, you got to get them started. You know, right now, too, it's really hard to kind of pinpoint and say, you know, we're going to put this nail in over here, and then the next day, we're going to put that nail in over there. We got to get started. They just got to get started. And once they get started, then to kind of predict the progress and the motion is always a little easier. But you know, they're just, they're going to start on Monday, June 8. That's when the road's going down. So I don't know if anybody's got any questions. We do have a number of meetings planned. We have our construction meeting, which would include MINDOT staff, city staff, engineering staff, and the contractor on Wednesday afternoons at 2 o'clock. And then we will have the construction meeting for the general public, which also will include some of city staff, some of SEH and engineering, some of MINDOT, and a representative or two from the contractor. That's every Thursday at 2 o'clock, where the general public can go to either a go-to meeting like this or call in on their phone and ask questions, or if nothing else, just listen to the progress. What's the plan? What are we doing? We didn't want to incorporate them on some of our city projects. We will have a construction meeting and invite the public there. This is a lot bigger project. Sometimes that can get kind of cluttered, and it causes confusion. So I think it's the right way. If we need to change it or want to change it in a month, or two, or three, we can. But I think this makes a lot of sense. We meet with all the people that are on the road doing the job on Wednesday, and then we meet with some of those people, along with the general public, on Thursday, and find out their concerns, tell them what's going on, and go that route. I think that pretty much covers it. Unless somebody's got a question for me.
I had a question from a resident. They wanted to know what all the loose rock signs are. There's loose rock on some signs up over here.
The seal coating project started today, so that will continue today, tomorrow, and probably most of the day on Wednesday. They were actually supposed to start on Tuesday, so it was planned for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They got done with their last job a little earlier. They called like right before lunch and said, hey, we're available, can we start today? And they had the proper signage for most of the roads up, so you know, realistically, when you're dealing with Mother Nature and trying to get things done, you can get them in a half a day earlier, it's better to do that. So that's what the loose rock signs are. Those roads will be seal coated.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Glenn?
Comment for Patrick, if he's picking up anything to put in the newspaper, is the portion of the news release or the information you received on Friday is that if anybody's wanting to receive the weekly updates, is please send in their email to the address that's contained or the telephone number that's contained in the letter. Or the second part is doing the piece that I described earlier on being able to text to the number that I gave you. That'll give them opportunities to receive updates on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Okay, good. Anything else, Glenn?
I think that's it.
Awesome.
Got a question for me.
Okay. Maggie, do you have anything?
I do not.
Rick?
Uh, no, nothing additional.
Sean?
No, I got Mike answering some questions for me this afternoon for some residents.
Okay. Bruce?
Just a quick update with the Main Street marketing program, the EDA initiative. That group has been meeting for a number of months, and now with the project started, a few activities are happening. The webpage, this is really more consumer-oriented initiative, so there's a Navigate New Prague page on the Chamber website. It's trying to focus attention for consumers and purchasers. The Punch Card program, which is funded through this program, is going to be starting. You'll start to see advertising in the newspaper and in the radio promoting businesses. And if they're not starting to be up, hopefully little posters will be, you'll start to see those on businesses promoting the Navigate New Prague webpage and activities. So that's starting up too, and Mike is heavily involved in that as well. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything to that?
You covered it.
Okay.
Anything else, Bruce?
Nope.
Okay. The only thing I have is, in some of your miscellaneous stuff at the back of the pocket, Kurt really did kind of give an update on the marketing efforts and what has been happening at the golf course. Obviously, the big part is rounds, and if you notice that our rounds are up 1,500 compared to last year. So we're definitely getting the rounds out there. So you know, it'd be nice, you know, once we start getting alcohol again and having some, you know, food and things like that, you know, hopefully that will help the financial position of the golf course. But they'll plan to do one of these every month after our golf board meeting, so just to kind of keep the council abreast of what's going on. So I just want to highlight that and make sure you take a quick look at it. And if you have any questions, you can either email me, and I can get them to Kurt, or you can email Kurt too, so. That's the only thing I had. If there's nothing else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Rick here.
A second by Rick Seiler. So I think we can probably just do a voice vote on the adjournment. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, everyone, we're adjourned, passed 5-0. Everyone stay safe. It looks like Bruce is self-disguising with his passion somewhere, but...
In an unknown location.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, and have a good rest of the week.
Good night.
Is that never to be found, Bruce?